All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the December 12 study session to order and ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Chair Director Brett Echols.
Right.
Vice Secretary Robert Ooten.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
President Mike Schaefer.
Here as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments, this is the time set aside for anyone wishing to speak on items within our purview, not on the agenda, and we have, Mr. Mosher, you have C1?
Yes.
Plus others, so go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, President Schaefer, members of the board, my name is Jim Mosher. I came here in person for multiple readings, reason, among those, the internet was not working at my home today. And in that connection, I wanted to commend the district for not only live streaming these meetings, but also providing a public remote participation opportunity. I think you're one of the few local agencies that I know of that does that, I think it's very commendable. One thing I wanted to point out, I don't know how many of you participated at home, is a member of the public when I do, and I see the image of the board sitting at the dais, I noticed up here it was correct, but when I look at home, it's a mirror image, I see you reversed, which is a little disconcerting to me, doesn't quite give the impression of speaking to you in person. And I would suggest maybe you want to invest just a couple of dollars of technology to correct that, so people at home are seeing the correct image. Thank you.
I'm not sure, I guess I don't, what do you mean by that?
I see Director Echols at the
Oh.
Right end, and Director Ooten at this end.
Is that something we can address? Thank you, sir, very much. You know, actually, a couple of us up here look better in reverse, so maybe that's why they do that.
Confused man, Ooten.
You two have a striking resemblance. You is one of his grandkids. All right, thank you, sir. We're gonna move to items of study then, Scott, I'll turn it over to you for C1.
President, as you know, every two years, the district does a community-wide survey to engage in the community on their reception or their acceptance of the district services. This year, we entered a contract with Probloski Research, and as you know, the board was very involved in drafting questions for this survey. The goal was to obtain a thousand response, contact a thousand residents, and specifically, it was thousands residents that are in our, that receive our services. Adam Probloski is here to give the results of that finding, of that survey, I am pleased to report that he was successful in obtaining a thousand surveys, actually a little bit more than that of our residents, and he is here now to share with you the results, and after that, we're some comments feedback from the board, so turn it over to Adam.
A bunch of slides to go through, but not as many as the full reporting, this is the executive version to kind of give you a high-level perspective. So first off, we can go to, I guess, the next slide, the methodology slide, that kind of explains how we approach this. We had a very inclusive approach that included calling people on the phone, landlines and mobiles, getting, sending them emails to bring them to an online survey, sending them text messages, and we also sent direct mail, a postcard, a snap pack, we call it, for people to use a QR code or go directly to the website to take the survey, so essentially, everyone that we were targeting, which were customers who receive trash services, and then also by default, receive sewer services as well, were participating. Seven percent of your customers, of your people in your service area chose to respond in Spanish, 1% chose Vietnamese. It just makes our data that much more accurate, because we're including people who prefer those languages. Most of them also speak English, and probably some speak other languages, but it's just a, it gave them the option, which was really helpful. This is a very big survey for a district of your size, typically, three, four hundred is what we normally would do in a district this size, so it really gives you a very, very clear picture of your, of your customers. All right, so some key findings, you see a lot of big numbers there, because they really are pretty impressive. Eighty-five percent have a favorable, are aware of the district, and then sixty-six percent specifically have a favorable impression of the district. This is where I tell you that this is not an academic exercise, you've probably heard this before, we're not looking for ninety percent here, because we don't agree that much on anything, we're looking for majorities and big majorities, two-thirds majorities. I think the, some of the key things, customers are satisfied with the job that CRNR is doing, eighty-five percent. Most customers say that it's important to have services recycled, for recycling products in their home. They want, sixty-five percent say they want to implement, they support implementing a three-card system. Hold there for a minute. And sixty-two percent prefer receiving information from the district by mail, so a little different than other agencies, where we find people are more kind of digitally oriented, they want to get that physical component from you, so that probably means you need a bigger budget for that sort of thing. Opportunity areas for improvement, one, improving trash collection consistency, thoroughness, and collecting on this, on the scheduled day. I say this just because there's some mentions of people who feel like they're not necessarily getting exactly what they want, but it's not some serious problem, it's just one of those opportunities, maybe you can tick up one or two percentage points of being better. And then potentially increasing customer awareness for some of the programs that you're offering, those are potential opportunities for improvement. Let's go on to the next slides, and we're gonna move pretty quickly here. Heard of the district, eighty-five percent yes, fourteen percent say no. The thing that we really look to here is the differential, so yes, eighty-five percent is a great number, high, high recognition. That delta between that fourteen percent that say they've never heard of you, and the ones that have, is really significant, that's what we're looking for here. Looking for big, big differences, and that's what you have, and if we track over time, you've got two thousand, you know, one, two thousand thirty, twenty-three, the differences over the last couple of years, pretty consistent there, so and, you know, if you're saying, oh, why didn't our numbers improve, right, we did all this outreach, why haven't we done better in the last two couple of years? Keep in mind that we're not talking to the same people we did two years ago, because there's a transient nature of our, of your public, so you have to kind of battle against that, and against outreach from every other brand and organization, to kind of improve your numbers, so keeping it consistent is really good. We'll keep going, I'll move quickly. Fifty-two percent think you're a part of the city, okay, so you have a branding issue here, and, and a political subdivision education lesson to be given to the public, if this is a priority. If this, if this is not a priority, and you don't care from a policy perspective, then just keep going along. But if you want to really differentiate yourself, and make it clear that you're an independent agency, and you want the public to really embrace that difference in what you are, this is gonna be a major focus, this is gonna be a big effort, because you've got to get through that noise to tell people who you are. That's a challenge. All right, moving on, sixty-six percent have a favorable opinion of the district, so, I'm sorry, sixty-six percent, that's a little bit of an uptick from two years ago, that's great, you're doing something right by having a positive impression. If we go up just a little bit, you'll see, maybe we can take the size down a little bit, so we can put it all on one, yeah, that's probably maybe a little bit more, I don't know. Okay, so again, differential, unfavorable is nine percent. Why are they unhappy, you know, this is terrible, look, that's not true, right? You have nine percent of the public who doesn't have a favorable opinion of you, you're government, so first of all, you're gonna have a baked-in group of people who don't like you anyway, no matter what you're doing, because you're government, but that differential is really huge. And twenty-three percent, they say they have no opinion, and look, they don't have to have an opinion. You're just, you know, doing the work you're supposed to do, you're making sure that CRNR picks up the trash, you're making sure the sewer flows. There's not necessarily a need for them to have a strong opinion, but you do have, you know, nearly two-thirds who have a favorable one, which is really good. Moving along, we'll take a look at the next one, and that's eighty-eight percent are satisfied with the job you're doing, provide sewer and water services, sewer wastewater services to their household, so that's, you know, those numbers are not gonna get much better than that. You have an uptick here from two thousand nineteen, so an upward trend, that's good. Do I think you're gonna get to ninety-nine percent? No, because you don't ever make everyone happy, only five percent say they're unsatisfied, that's a really strong place to be. All right, we can keep going to eighty-two percent are satisfied with the job you're doing, providing trash recycling services and green waste and organics collection to their household. Again, really high number, big delta between unsatisfied. Not much you're gonna make big improvements there, you're in a really strong place, and really surprising to me, actually, here all along the way, we can stay on this slide, is the low number of unsure, so they feel like they really have a sense of things when it comes to these services. In this case, CRNR, the job that they're doing, eighty-five percent, and only eleven percent say they're unsatisfied. Uptick from, from two years ago, downward numbers on the unsatisfied, this is the trends that you want to see. These are really positive numbers, I think the CRNR and then their staff should be pretty proud of these numbers. Next up, sixty-eight percent say the amount they pay for trash recycling service is just about right, so you're in a great place here, because they think you're charging the right amount. You do have one percent who think that's too low, you should charge them more. I can't tell you who those people are, but you should try to find them. And then, you know, less than twenty percent, nineteen percent say that's too high. Again, huge differential there, more, much more than three to one of people who say it's just about right, and you do have a group that says it's unsure, why is that? I pay, well, I don't even pay the bills in my house, it's just automatic, I have no idea what my trash collection bills cost me. But if you were to ask, let's say, my wife, she would, you know, maybe be in that unsure category. And it could be switched, obviously, in many households, so there's definitely a reason why some people might not have context here. But definitely, you are in a strong place, does this mean that, probably means that if your rates had to go up at some point, you have a pretty good baked-in ability to raise them to the right levels, because you've got people that are basically saying you're in a strong, you're in a good place. So I think we can go on from there, but you got a good, good numbers. Eighty percent of single-family homeowners or renters say the amount they pay for sewer and water service is just about right. Again, not a lot of, I wouldn't call it, not a lot of people who really have a probably clear sense of this, because it goes on their property tax bill, they're not really seeing those numbers on a regular basis. But most people feel like it's just about right, it's just not out of whack for them, and you've got their eighty percent, or eight to one differential on the price there. And then, you know, the multifamily folks, sixty-five percent saying just about right. So these are, again, people who definitely receive your, your services. Only seven or eight percent say it's too high, big differential there, and eleven percent say it's too low, so you can charge them more if they, if you want to. All right, keep going, forty-seven percent think the property owners is responsible for maintaining their homes, sewer lateral pipe, so they get it, this is good. Not a majority, but a big group know that they're responsible, or whoever's the owner of their property is responsible. Twenty-one percent think it's you all, another twenty-one percent think it's the city, and then some of the state and a few others out there. So this is probably a good trend, not that we have a trending data on this, but they think it's, it's, most of them, a lot of them think it's their responsibility. And if this is something you want to educate on, you've got a good basis to kind of launch off of, you got a good chance to improve those numbers, and make sure they know it's their responsibility.
Did the people who said state of California, did they volunteer that, or did you guys ask that?
This was a specific, I think, a specific question, I don't think it was an open-ended, I'll confirm that.
I just, they must be people from other states that have moved to California.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Very possible, yeah, and the others weren't open-ended, so there could be someone that said, you know, their neighbor, or whatever, you know, some random thing in there. Okay, next up, twenty-three percent say yes to the question during the last twelve months, have you contacted Costa Mesa Sanitary District in any way? So this is twenty-three percent of your constituency has reached out to you in some capacity. These numbers are very, very similar to two years ago, not a lot of difference here. If there's a drive, a desire to make a difference here, then maybe you can dive into more online services or something else, but it's, it's it's actually relatively low to compare to what we see other agencies, other, maybe say more water agencies. All right, let's move on to, if they did, so if they reached out to you, among those twenty-three percent who actually reached out in some capacity, we say, how would you rate the helpfulness of staff? Well, ninety-two percent say help, you know, very helpful, sixty-two percent, thirty percent say somewhat, but ninety-two percent say staff was helpful. Only seven percent say not at all helpful, so what could that be? Well, they probably weren't able to, on the fly, reduce their bill, that's probably the biggest factor there. But for the most part, you have really strong numbers, ninety-two percent say your staff is helpful. Moving along, during the last twelve months, have you reached out to CRNR? Thirty-three percent say yes, so a bigger chunk have reached out to CRNR in some capacity, again, very stable numbers here from, from time over time. Okay, next up, was CRR able to resolve your issue in a timely manner? Seventy-eight percent said yes, twenty percent said no. So, I mean, you can imagine what the things might be, that, you know, they couldn't come out that same day to pick something up, whether it might be, but seventy-eight percent say they're very happy that they were able to resolve their issue in a timely manner. All right, we'll flip it to the next step, so this is a little bit of a I don't know, this is a trick question, but it's a question that I think, you know, people might, might not fully grasp, so essentially, did CRNR not pick up your trash at some reason for, on a collection day, they were supposed to pick it up? Thirty, thirty-nine percent say yes, there's a time when they might have missed that. But I don't know if we have the next slide, it's pretty consistent to before, but yeah, here we have it, so you've got in there, they skipped my house, where is it here? Dinner arrived for service, skipped my house for reasons of physical access, okay, emptied, oh, so the cart was emptied on a different day than regularly scheduled. So a big chunk of those people who said that they didn't get it, well, it was because it was the next day. It was, you know, picked up for his Christmas or his New Year, and they picked up the next day, so I think next year, we might look to further define this question, because I don't want to unnecessarily, you know, knock CRNR, because the fact is that their normal course of business is to pick it up on the next day for, for, you know, holidays. But for the most part, you see other things, they just didn't arrive, some people say they didn't arrive, and there's some other things, cart was blocked by a vehicle or obstruction. So there's things here that really happen that can actually cause the challenge to, for them to be picked up. Or in some cases, I forgot to put it out, so not all those things are necessarily the fault of CRNR proper. But definitely opportunity for improvement, that's why we put it in the, in the, in that category in the key finding slide. All right, so next up, seventy-seven percent say that, you know, they're familiar with, you know, that they know you offer large bulk trash collection. And then you've got lower numbers recognizing the door-to-door hazardous waste collection, and sewer inspection rebate program, et cetera, so it's a, it's a high recognition of bulk, and then the other thing, so again, if this is something you want to really promote, then you know how, which ones you want to really put out there and talk more about, but you've got fairly high recognition of the big one. All right, next up, we've got, you've got big adoption, has you ever utilized the program for large bulk items? Seventy-eight, seventy-nine percent say yes, they've used that program, it doesn't necessarily mean a time limit, so it could be over the course of their service with CRNR, so big adoption for that. Next up, have you, were you satisfied with the program of the people who did use that program? Large bulk pickup, ninety-two percent say yes, very consistent from, from the previous year, so strong support for it and strong favorability for it. Door-to-door hazardous waste, thirty-one percent have used it, most, two-thirds have not, but then if we go to the kind of satisfaction with it, ninety-four percent satisfaction, very similar numbers. I really love how consistent your numbers are, it just kind of, it makes you feel good that you're kind of doing the right thing, and things stay the same. In this case, going up a little bit. Sewer inspection rebate program, again, most people haven't utilized in any way, but the fourteen percent that said yes, we'll look at those folks, and seventy-five percent say that they're satisfied with it. This is really small numbers, so this is an anomaly, these numbers drop down, you could have had, we're talking about, you know, handfuls of people who could have had a different impression and put those numbers lower down. Only twelve, thirteen percent say they're unsatisfied, and again, you know, my wife was the one that called about the sewer inspection program, I don't have context, that's why I say unsure. So keep in mind that, or a roommate could have done that, so that's why you have those numbers being as high as they could be. All right, satisfied with the service provided by Costa Mesa Sanitary District. This is the like, you know, the aha moment, we've kind of taken them through a little bit of a narrative about who you are. It wasn't our necessarily intention to educate them, but along the way, they got a little bit educated of all the services you provide, who you are as an agency, what you're about. Ninety-one percent say they're satisfied based on all this knowledge they've accumulated over the course of the twelve-minute survey. So that is a really strong number, only six percent say they're unsatisfied, that's probably the lowest you're gonna go. You have a really strong ninety-two percent approval rating, not gonna get very much better than that. All right, next up, we've got SB thirteen eighty-three, are you familiar with it, what this does? And we give a little bit of context there, because we don't expect most people know the names of, you know, the numbers of legislation, and the context is very basic. The fact that you're gonna change the trash collection, collection, you've got to, you know, dispose of organic separately. Give me a little context, fifty percent say they're familiar, but a big, big chunk say they're not, so you can't just, if, if any of you are out there talking to Rotary Club, and you're talking about SB thirteen eighty-three, you gotta give a lot of context before you really dive in, because they're just not familiar with it as much. All right, so in the past month, how often was food waste from your household placed in organics recycling bin? This is kind of a behavioral question, and you have kind of surveys that you've done of trash, so you have a sense of this. This is what people believe is happening in their household, and some, this might be somewhat aspirational. It may not be fully accurate, this is what people believe, so you want to maybe trust but verify kind of situation. But this is what they're thinking is happening in their household, and so presumably, you're gonna want these numbers to improve, where the always number gets a lot bigger. But that's gonna take a lot of effort, a lot of outreach, because people just, it's changing behaviors, right? It's taken us decades and decades to get people to use less water, and kind of have that a part of their natural kind of operational scheme. It's gonna take a long time, presumably, to get people to change their, their attitudes and their behaviors towards organics. All right, so next up, we'll look at, you know, the seventy-seven percent who think it's important to separate organic waste to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So we gave in the background, and now we say that there's a three-card system, and, you know, the methane is the most potent climate, you know, climate pollutants in the atmosphere. We kind of gave them, is it important to you to reduce, you know, these greenhouse gas emissions? Seventy-seven percent say yes, ten percent say it's unimportant to them, some say it's, you know, makes no difference, but seventy-seven percent say it's important to them to reduce these greenhouse gas emissions, so that's a great starting place, because if they want change, then, and you're gonna start talking about it more, then you have adoption, you have people who support that change, and reducing those emissions. So next up, now, we talk about the possibility of a third card, three-card system, have you heard about it? Most people say no, they haven't heard about it, and, you know, that's probably pretty natural, you gotta talk more about it and get through that noise. But, and I don't know how much you really made that a priority, so most people say they know, they haven't heard about a three-card system. So next up, as part of the, you know, ongoing efforts, we talk more now about thirteen, thirteen eighty-three, and sixty-five percent support this concept of the three-card system, so that's up from fifty-eight percent two years ago. So you have, you know, first people who say they want to reduce the emissions, and now you have support for a three-card system. Those are good numbers, twenty-one percent oppose, I think they're probably envisioning, you know, bringing the third cart to the curb, or where the plate would be going, things like that. You got big, big support, and on the uptick for a three-card system. Now, let's look at the next slide. And then, by adding the third cart, residents will be able to reduce the amount of waste incentive landfills, and reduce these greenhouse gas emissions. We're putting a finer point, seventy-five percent say it's personally important to them to recycle products in their home. So we're kind of building up to this place where we have big support for all these things we're trying to accomplish, the legislation is trying to accomplish. Next up, so in some key areas, it'd be difficult for the three carts to be placed, based on, you know, the access. So how about if we have two days to pick up trash? Now, numbers are much more mixed, forty-two percent say they support it, thirty-nine percent say they oppose it. So there's a, and you got a big chunk actually to say it makes no difference to them, so you can kind of put those in either category. But you do have a very mixed number here, there isn't broad-based support, like all those other things, we're seeing big, big numbers, saying I'm okay with a second day. So if we look at the next slide, would you be willing to pay for it? Fifteen percent say yes, seventy-five, seventy-six percent say no. Now, I didn't tell them it was gonna cost them thirty-five cents a day, I didn't tell them it was gonna cost them a hundred dollars a month, I didn't tell them what it was gonna cost. We just said, would you be willing to pay? And so these numbers would change possibly significantly for the better if we put a specific point on it. If we said, this is gonna cost six dollars a month, or sixteen dollars a month, these numbers could change specifically because of people having a better sense of it, not just this open-ended response, but on the, on the level, this is a challenge to overcome, this is not a great starting place. So if we go to the next slide, how would you prefer to receive information from the district? You can see here, they want to get mail from you. Email's good, too, and then everything else drops off from there. So mail is gonna be your preferred method, to the extent that that's what people are looking for. And then, this is just your demographics, we'll go on to, this is what your people who live in your service area who receive trash service from you, this is what they look like. You know, they're a little bit older, and they largely live in Costa Mesa, but you've got some other territory that you cover. This is the language they prefer to respond to us in, and you kind of see, obviously, they're, if they were sort of trash from you, service from you, they're gonna be, you know, much, much bigger percentage would be homeowners or property owners versus renters, who would be, could be living in any situation where you'd be serving trash or picking up trash for them. So I know that's a ton of information, we can move on to the questions. There's, as you probably know, a slide deck that's probably about four times the size of this with all kind of other background information. And then there's a pull report, which has the open-ended responses that might be interesting to look through, to kind of get a flavor for what people are saying when they, when they have an opportunity to say something open. Overall, super high positive numbers, and, you know, some policy decisions for you all to figure out how to move forward.
Real quick, how many, how many cut connections, or how many folks did you talk to to get to a thousand?
No, I don't have it in front of me right now, but we have about a twenty-seven percent completion rate, so of the and that's, I should say, that's phone and online, about twenty-seven percent of the people that choose to like, you know, answer the phone or click to go through the survey, actually complete it. And the mail, I'll have to look, mail typically is about a three percent response rate for surveys, so, and I think we probably exceeded that a little bit. But the key is that we, we don't have, there's no like like authority on, on the demographics of your trash customers, because they're so unique in that they are not representative of census, they're not representative of voters, they're not representative of any other particular group, because it's a, it's a highly homeownership kind of scenario, so it's kind of unique, so they're gonna be kind of a little bit different, but our goal, we kind of combinated for that, and did our best to make sure that we were dead-on accurate with, with demographics, and we believe we achieved that.
The other question, and I'll, this is a little bit off the subject, but there were twenty-three percent that complained or had, had a problem with us. In your opinion, should we, or if we logged those people, if we kept track of that group that calls staff and says, hey, I've got a problem, or contact, is it worthwhile to go back to those folks at a future date? Just to survey them, to see what the outcome was, are they happy now? Is that ever done?
So there's a couple of things I'll say, one is, for a lot of agencies, we do a transaction survey, and I don't know if you're doing that now. So this is something you can do in-house, it doesn't, doesn't require us, but we do it for a lot of agencies, because there's a process to manage it. So right after, or at some point within the week of getting a call, getting an email, getting something, they get a, you know, particularly an email, asking them about their experience. That's something that can probably identify head off, if you did that, head off some of those concerns, and, and, but then you have to have the staff to do the follow-up. So that's, it's one possibility, and I think that's probably the best course of action. You know, talking to them six months, a year later, I don't know the utility of that, because I, I don't know if they're gonna really remember. I think it's really kind of a transaction scenario rather than a longer-term.
It seems like in the consumer world now, if you order something
It it seems like in the consumer world now, if you order something, if you buy something, you get an email twenty minutes later. How was your shopping experience? You know, that's kind of why I tied that. I don't know. I I. I think there's a certain amount of people that would appreciate being contacted again. But I think you're probably right. The people who get it done or that they're it's out of out of sight, out of mind, they don't want to hear about it anymore.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. You're you're not, I mean, sorry, you're not Apple. You know, they 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 don't they don't love you as a brand like that.
Yeah. Thank you, Adam. Right, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of questions. You had mentioned this represents our city will not exa- I just want to clarify, not really, because census would be completely different numbers. But respondents were sixty-two percent, thereabouts, were over fifty years of age, right?
Yeah.
What I found interesting was you go down on the full blown report. Those people over fifty provided generally positive responses to the questions. Those under forty, they were the ones against something, answered no to something, didn't like something. So I just I found that interesting. Is that unusual in your experience?
No, I mean, there's, I mean, we like seeing that stuff. We like seeing differences. So you, for for our purposes, our next steps would be to work with staff on on, you know, helping program outreach and program the communications to to maybe bring up those numbers among some of those targeted groups, improve those those numbers. I mean, part of it is. You know, your your older residents are are going to be reading things more and be more engaged in in having an understanding of political subdivisions and and how government works. And your younger residents are going to be less so. That, you know, you're not, you're not meeting your younger residents where they are on TikTok, on Snapchat and in in in, you know, those forums. And so if you want to address those folks, you've got to get, you know, someone sitting in the chair next to Scott who knows how to do a dance on TikTok. And.
Although not necessarily, it's YouTube's are number one.
And YouTube, yes.
Which that that said, that actually makes sense. So I guess that goes into something else because. You know, mail being the, that's how they want to be communicating. Well, yes, if you're over fifty, mail. My kids, three of whom live out on their own outside the house, I don't even think they know where their mail comes.
Yes.
They don't look at mail.
Yeah.
I even, you know, I barely look at them. So that part, we got to be careful with how we market to our database. Because yes, the over fifty, sixty, whatever, is going to look at mail. But anyone under thirty, don't even.
They don't even know where the stamp goes.
Right.
Yeah, no, a hundred percent. I think this is, to the extent that that. And the extent that that we can help program some of that, you know who to talk to and in what mode to talk to them. It it's kind of the benefit of having those demographic data that you can really do targeted outreach.
And then, you know, is there a way we could look at? The the really important questions that are going to guide policy? These numbers versus, you know, two years ago, numbers and almost side by side. Like, I would be curious, all right, these are eighty percent positive. Which the great news is our customer service gets the highest marks out of this whole thing. So that's awesome news. But I would be curious, did the did their numbers change that much from?
I think for the most part, we put in tracking for everything we had. But but like here, you know, well, support implementation. But I think we put in tracking for anything we had. But I will go back and look and see if, for instance, like, I mean, obviously, we do track this. And some of these data, we have numbers going back even further. So if you want to see that, we can do that. So we'll look and make sure we we're tracking everything we have tracking ability for.
Because I'm the type of person who's like, well, OK, well, where did we start to where we are now? And I want to see, are we improving? I mean, we're, the numbers are are pretty good, as you point out. But I would like to see what the past shows where we're at today.
Yeah.
And then, you know, some of these specific questions about, you know, the interesting part was, you know, yeah, OK, three card system. Ooh, sounds great in theory, except, well, no, 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 I don't want it. So when you dial that and that's, that was one of the more interesting answers to me in the entire survey was like, well, yeah, we know about three, that sounds great. Well, do you want it? No. Are you going to pay for it? No. That was interesting.
And I also think on on that, and I don't know where where you're going as an agency on that subject. But keep in mind, when we ask people, do you want an aerator in your sink? Do you want a a low flow toilet? When we when we talk to them about it, you know, twenty-five years ago, twenty years ago, of course, they don't want it. They don't want change. I don't I don't want you making changes in my house. I don't I don't want to have to buy a high efficiency washer. I just washed one, I just bought one. So those are, those are, you know, how they feel today. To the extent that things change over time, it's not it's not like you're you're assaulting them with with the idea. They're just giving their preference. And to the extent that legislation says this is the way it's going to go, then people start adopting it.
Yeah, so, yeah, I that would be one thing I would like to see if we could get a future report on some previous history based on this stuff, on on the big questions and things like that.
We'll look and see if there's any more of those we can pull in.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Big part of that, that I don't want to pay for that is you alluded to it early when you were talking.
Is it ten cents or?
You know, plus it's the government making me pay more. Hell, no, I'm not going to pay the government anymore. I want to commend both of you for handling the senior questions.
I saw your case.
Other questions for for Adam? Bob, go ahead.
Well, on the on the last slide, you had some data on home type.
Yeah.
We service only four units and residences.
Yes.
Census shows there's a fifty percent plus rental rate in Costa Mesa. Were you able to differentiate when you talked to somebody that's renting? Whether they were in, you know, a twenty-three unit? System or whether they were in a a four unit?
Yeah, so if you go down to that 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 segment last slide. So we took your database, your service database and only reached out. So and and so, yeah, so the most obviously were in single family homes because that's the vast majority. There's some condo or townhomes, so less than four units. And and obviously, there's, you know, a couple of mobile home folks that you were potentially service there. But really small numbers, anything other than single family. So the way we went about it was to take your ser- your service addresses. And then we we matched those to consumer data. So we know, and and quite frankly, we didn't even need to do that because we knew, you know, we we did to get emails and phone numbers and and things like that. And then we could, we also mailed to them as well. So this is very much only people who receive trash service from you. There's virtually no chance that someone would have responded that didn't receive trash service from you.
Well, then what I'd like to ask staff is, do you know the breakdown for? Our, we have twenty-two thousand residents. I think that we sewer. Does staff know or can you can you ultimately provide me with the data that shows how this compares? To, you know, to to this data? And in other words, does staff know when when you're sending a bill to? Multi-family residents? Or single family residents, the percentage?
Yes, I I don't have it off the top of my head, but we.
OK, yeah, I mean, it'd be interesting to compare.
Yeah.
Hey, other questions?
Interesting for me. I don't know about the rest of them.
Comes from you, it's interesting. OK, then, thank you, thank you. I mean. We get surprised, two years ago, there were some surprises. And I think the thirteen eighty-three thing surprised me. Fifty percent of the people, maybe that was just their response. I I don't know, but that was a an interesting number for me. And it's going to guide our staff's educational and our and our consultants' educational process. So that's good, very good. So I'm going to open this up to public comment, Mr. Moser. I know you had something to contribute.
Yes, thank you again, President Schaefer. I thought your initial question about the response rate was an interesting one. And I I personally would not know, perhaps Adam, has a sense of that. In in a voluntary poll like this, where twenty-seven percent or three percent of the people ask, answer. How does that skew the results? Are they tended to be more favorable, less favorable? Than if it was an involuntary poll where you could somehow actually ask every single rate payer out of some sample of a thousand what their attitude was? I I do not know. I I did want to commend the Bolzky research on providing their highly transparent eight-hundred page report on this. I thought that was good to be able to see those details. Because when I looked at the summary, the key findings in the staff report, it seemed to be picking out favorable things. And I was pleased in the report orally here to hear things where there might be room for improvement. Some of the things in the staff report seemed a little bit kind of, it was all things that we could cheer about that were very good. Not not to suggest that our staff is not helpful, I'm sure that they are. But I was a little surprised to see that ninety-two percent thought that they were helpful or very helpful. And when I looked at the actual question, it was. It had three stages. Highly satisfied, neutral and unsatisfied. And it was kind of lumping the neutral with the high end to come up with ninety-two percent, which I thought was a little bit possibly deceptive. And so seeing the things where there's room for improvement, I I thought, and as I think Director Echols indicated he had read, I thought it was very useful that the eight-hundred page report at the end of it to see the answers to the open ended questions. And those of you who have not read those, I would commend you, recommend that you do look at those. I thought they were very interesting. And I guess the final thing I would want to say is I I noticed in the survey, there were no questions about the governance of the district. And so although eighty-five percent are aware that there is a district. I would wonder how many of them know that it's governed by a board? How many know that the meetings are being streamed? And how many could name their representative on the board? I would guess those numbers are all lower than eighty-five percent. Thank you.
Please.
Two things there. Well, three things. Let me remember, response rate relatively high. And the key is our aggressive outreach to make sure we're getting a broad representation of of demographics. So I I wouldn't, I would say as twenty-seven percent response rate, that is very strong. And the 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 numbers bear out because we have broad response from all these different demographics. So it's very accurate data from that perspective. On the 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 point of neutral. When people say OK or neutral or or anything that's kind of in the middle. Especially with services and government. We don't put a value judgment on that. We essentially say that it's OK, it's good, it's fine, it's 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 just the way it's supposed to be. And so we do put that typically in the in the positive category because they're not mad at you. They think you're doing OK. That's kind of the way we look at 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 neutral. And then lastly, just on the on the point of governance slide, I think it's five. We do kind of give the very basic explanation of what the district is, five member board, fried sewer, water services, things like that. Just to make it clear what you all are. And that's where we get the sixty-six percent favorable rating of you as an agency. It it's, if if you did ask if they know they're board member, I suspect those numbers are pretty low. Maybe they know already.
It only, it only, it only matters every four years.
Yeah.
Most people don't, people don't even know who our vice president of the country is, for goodness sake. So forget the board here.
Learn how to spell Schaefer then. The right way. All right. Thank you again. So at this point. CAC is going to look at it.
Yes, CAC will review it in January.
And then what do we do from then with it?
Well, it's it's up to you, a direction from the board, what do you want to do today? My plan was to meet with my outreach team and go with results and and look at, you know, the data where we can make improvements and then come back to the board on on some suggestions.
Okay, I I know personally. And if we're touting our own horn, so be it. I think we need to at least put something out and get the results on the website for people to take a look at. Sure, you guys have already thought of that, but. Okay, then, yeah, go ahead.
When you meet with your outreach team, are you going to have C and R, CR and R involved with that?
Wasn't planning on to, but we could, yeah.
I'm just thinking because you're, you know, the the two car, two day pickup, that's going to be an important issue for us.
Well, sure, that's, I mean, my, my, the data I saw from the two two day a car, that's like a dead, dead, dead issue. I wasn't really going to bring it back.
That's what I was getting.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we do these surveys. So we're to see where we stand. That, to me, is a dead issue. OK, the two car, two days a week is, we're not going to bring that back.
How many trucks would that involve?
And it would require at least one additional truck.
Okay. So I was thinking.
And then we'll, we'll hear back, go ahead.
Just a follow up on that. So when you're meeting with the outreach, I think CR and R should have some sort of involvement in those meetings for, as Director Perry said. But also, a couple of the questions where there's some areas for improvement, need their input, obviously. So I think that would be an important, at some point, to include them. And then, yeah, bring it back to this group here, along with, again, I I really want to see that historical data as well.
We'll we'll bring that back in a future study.
Perfect.
Thank you all. Good presentation. All right, thanks, sir. Item two, code enforcement officer report, David.
Good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. I'm here to present my report for the month of November. In the month of November. I was enforcing scavenging graffiti in trash containers left within public view. I want to say in the month of November, the staff received no calls about scavenging complaints. And to address those early morning scavengers, I'm out of the office by six thirty AM. I did encounter in the month of November, four scavengers listed by the maps in various parts of our community. Listed by the the maps. Any questions on trash or scavengers?
Are any of them repeats or they new people?
This one lady that I've caught over in Mesa del Mar was was a second contact.
David, you you're probably seeing, you're going to see a drop off if OCC Recycle Center stays closed. Or or you you might ask them where 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 they're planning to take, what what they're picking out of the trash, just so we can alert the community.
That would be an interesting thing to hear. I mean, where do they, where do they, where are they going?
I'm not sure. Director Ooten and myself were talking earlier. I I don't think that there's recycling at Stater Brothers anymore. And so they're they're probably having to leave the community.
I know there's one at Walmart down in Huntington Beach. I just noticed it the other day, right on beach in.
Talbert?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be a. That'd be a curious question.
Well, because then you waste any money you make off the recyclables and gas money driving to wherever you're going.
Well, so many brought bikes, maybe.
Well, that's a long bike ride.
A long bike ride.
In the month of November, I had two hundred and twenty-one cases of trash carts left within public view. Again, listed by the street names and how many carts were sighted on that particular street. That would end the trash container enforcement. No graffiti cases were opened in the month of November. In the back page will depict where those scavengers were located. Basically everywhere except for Thursday is trash route area. Any further questions on that?
Placentia still leads the pack, I think.
Yeah, I've been on top of Placentia. That does have gone down. I mean, from, you know, I want to say four or five from that first day to to about one. Yesterday I was over there and as soon as they see me driving by, they're putting those carts away now.
All right.
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, did Edison?
Out of curiosity, did Edison, uh, coordinate with CR and R? On their, um, turnoff, you know, they, they just, you know, there were hours where. Different streets couldn't, uh, function too well, and you couldn't have any, anything, uh, on the curb.
Yeah, I know, and the, i- if there was, you know, trash day, I, I, you know, I, I think they were coordinating with the trash hauler, uh, uh. If they saw them, you know, were able to communicate with them. Um, I'm not sure, they didn't coordinate with, with, with our staff, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike. Um, the, the city has an ordinance that, uh, also prohibits trash containers from public view. Have, have you had any, um, interaction with what the, the city, if any, is doing? Do, does the city, uh, help us i- in any way in this regard?
And, and that's a good question. Uh, Marissa and myself, uh, want to set up a meeting with, uh, Renee, the, the chief of code enforcement over there now. And have this discussion.
Yeah.
I'm seeing a lot of multifamily places with, uh, you know, like, say, waste management carts, you know, in public view. And, and again, I know a lot of apartment complexes were exempt from storing carts. But this particular complex is very big and has a lot of places where they could store. They just prefer to leave it out on the sidewalk.
But, but you, most of these that you list here are residences?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Residents are, are multifamily within our jurisdiction.
Yeah, we hit a little bit of a snag on this because there, there could be a conflict with the city code, so I need to talk to, um, Alan Burns about that.
I doubt after hearing about the city.
Yeah. Any other questions for, uh, the code enforcement officer? Job, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, finally, um, Gina, I guess you're get legislation.
Yes, good morning, members of the board. I know it's been a while since we talked about legislation. So I just wanted to do a quick, um, sort of end-of-the-year wrap-up on what's been going on. So, before you is our end-of-the-year congressional and state legislative reports. Um, I'm just briefly gonna summarize what you can find in the attached reports in more detail. And as always, the reports contain links to each of the individual bills in case you want to see the full bill language. So, starting with our congressional report, um, although we're nearing the end of the calendar year. Uh, Congress remains active until January twenty-twenty-five, so these bills are still active as we continue into the new year. You'll notice that the majority of the bills pertaining to our industry focus on funding and grants. Uh, primarily for infrastructure of wastewater and recycling systems. There are also some bills in the report relating to other topics that are of interest to us, things like PFAS regulation. Uh, plastic reduction, food waste reduction, and labeling standards for flushable wipes. These are a lot of the same issues that we've, we've been covering for a long time. Um, but as you can see, there hasn't been any major movement on any of these bills. Um, I, I know organizations like OCSD and CASA continue to lobby, um. For us and for, um, just monitoring the bills, so I'll continue to do the same, but there's not really much to report. In that sense. Uh, are there any questions about the congressional report before I move on to state?
Um, Gina, there, I think there was an article in the paper today that either the state or. I think the, the state is, uh, proposing. Uh, a subsidy to homeowners for ADUs. Uh, it, it was, was, I think it was in today's paper. Um, and, and there was something passed, uh, that had to do with ADUs, uh.
Yes.
Ten thirty-three.
There was, that might be one that I'm, I'm covering, yep, I have that one on my list. Um, so if there's no other questions on the congressional report, I can go over some of the state bills. Um, so we had a number of bills we were following this year, and of the ones we were following, fifteen of them passed and will be going into effect. Um, so today I'm just gonna go over the bills that are most notable and would have a direct impact on us. Uh, the first one is AB two-eighty-one, and this establishes notification requirements. That special districts are going to have to follow when receiving permit applications for new housing developments. Um, and it's a different notification period based on how many units are being developed. Uh, the next bill is AB four-hundred, and this extends the sunset date. To continue allowing local agencies to use design-build contracting. Uh, for certain public works projects that cost over a million dollars, um, and that protects it through twenty-thirty-one. Uh, next, AB five-five-seven, this bill allows, uh, local agencies like us to continue teleconferencing. Public meetings without complying to certain aspects of the Brown Act's teleconferencing rules. Um, and this is only if there's a declared state of emergency, so you may remember we used to, um, approve a resolution every thirty days to allow for that. Um, and this just says that we can continue doing that if we choose to.
Um, continue to do the thirty-day offer.
Yes, but they extended that period, so it's not thirty days anymore, it's forty-five days, so it just gives a little bit more leeway.
And, but it still maintains the provisions that, um, a member has to have a, a reason to be gone.
Um.
Be on business for the district, they still have to post.
So that's actually if we don't use this method, under this method, it has to be a declared state of emergency. So I think back when we were using it, it was still considered the COVID declaration, and once that ended. Um, we went to the other method where there has to be a reason. Um, the next bill, AB seven, if, or seven-fifty-nine. This simplifies the process for sanitary districts to pay bills by allowing the board to authorize the district treasurer. To pay bills without the board approving warrant resolutions, as long as the payments don't exceed the approved budget. Um, so this is just kind of an administrative thing that, you know, if you'd like to allow the district treasurer to do that, you can authorize it. Yes, this passed.
And that would be Caitlin?
Uh, district treasurer, so that'd be Mark Davis.
Davis.
Mm-hmm. Um, next is AB ten thirty-three, uh, which Director Oden I think had mentioned. So this allows for ADUs to be sold separately from their primary residential unit as condominiums. And it requires the homeowner to notify, um, utility districts like ours when they purchase the ADU. So that one will be interesting.
It, it's, it's more than interesting, it's a nightmare.
From District Council, uh, on ten thirty-three, and I can have him report out to the board next week on this.
That'd be great, I, I mean.
Unreal.
It, 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 it just doesn't make any sense, but. Anyway.
Sacramento.
So it sounds like we'll have more details for you on that from Alan. Um, and then the last one I wanted to go over was SB seven oh-six, and this allows special districts to use the best value selection criteria. For up to ten public works projects costing over five million dollars. This was something that was previously only allowed for water-related projects, so it just extends it to other districts, other special districts. Um, so that concludes my report, happy to answer any questions.
I, you know, when I was flipping through these, there was one, and I beg, apologize for not having it ready, um. The one on plastic gift, here we go, SB seven twenty-eight. Prohibits the sale or distribution of plastic gift cards beginning January one, twenty-twenty-seven. Except those that are usable with multiple sellers. So that means the MasterCard, American Express, Visa ones are good. But the Target, Amazon, all the rest of them are no good. So if anybody has those cards and they don't know what to do with them, I'll take them off your hands.
I don't think that one passed.
Fail, I don't fail, but how could, I mean, somebody had to think of, had to think of that, I mean, I don't know.
Amex paid their lobbyists more than, say.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, I think that one was vetoed by the governor.
It said, I mean, and the veto made perfect sense to me, negative impact on small businesses.
Right.
Yeah, you know, or big businesses too. All right, I'm gonna open this public comment, Mr. Moser, you had indicated.
Thank you again, President Schaefer. I had, uh, I think, three comments. Uh, first of all, I noticed also the item about the warrant list now being optional. And I think that would be a good study session item for you, whether it's a burden presently. Either on the district that they have to do that, or. Is there an advantage? Do we need to bill, pay bills quicker than we do? Is there a reason not to have the public be able to see it? I, I think it's something you should discuss the pros and cons of continuing to do it if it's now voluntary. Uh, I had the same question you did about the open meeting law and whether any changes have been made to that. I don't follow all the Citizens Advisory Committee meetings, but I noticed some of the members participate remotely in those. And I'm not sure if they're entirely aware that that's not a convenience available to them, but they have to have a special reason that has to be disclosed at the meeting. And I, I think it is really valuable for the people to show up, as you do, to discuss things in person. So, if there's not been a change in that, I hope it can be clarified to them that they, they do have an obligation to show up in person. And then, uh, finally, it was interesting in the report to see how Assemblywoman Petri Norris and Senator Min voted. Uh, but I would point out that you do have some ratepayers for whom Petri Norris is no longer their representative. So you do have people that would wonder how their own representative voted on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anything else on the legislative report? Thank you, Gina, very much. And I think with that, any oral communications, director comments? I, before I forget, I think, on that, with the warrants and the treasurer paying bills. We don't have a lot of bills that are paid by the treasurer, are they? Aren't they done by the finance off department?
Like you just said, it's just an administrative purpose, you want to streamline the process, make it more efficient to pay bills, that's just one option.
Okay.
My, my concerns are checks and balances, that's my concern, so I think usually we have a place is, is good for internal controls.
Okay.
If for the public to know what we're doing.
If for the public, yeah, absolutely.
Do we need a policy?
So, yeah, because I, the way we're dealing with warrants and checks and balances, like, sorry, but why would we want to go?
Why would you change?
Why would we want to hide that? You know, so, yeah.
Okay, anything else from anybody? Thank you, staff.
Happy holidays to everybody.
Get to see you again in one week.
Right, board meeting is, again, rescheduled for four-thirty on the eighteen.
What time? Yeah, eleven-thirty. What time are you guys gonna arrive over there? It starts at eleven-thirty, so we'll get there a little bit earlier. Oh, really?
All right, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.